So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 21st, 2024 meeting of Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Noel if he would come forward and give us an indication. See here? Uh-oh. Uh-oh. I thought he was here. Sorry. Would you want me to? Mike?
Okay.
Sure.
Funny you guys picking me. We place could catch on fire. Forget all bowerheads. Lord, thank you for having everybody with us today. We pray for the health of the county and everyone in our families and in our world. And I want to just thank you for giving us another day to do our jobs and to have the ability to be here. And just, just thank you for everything that you do for us, Lord. And amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart, for filling in. That was always Commissioner Weems's job in the past.
It was. Yes, it was.
Might have to designate that in the future and make sure somebody hears it. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any additions or corrections?
I have none. I make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, we do have a couple of public service announcements today?
Excuse me. Commissioner Hans, as far as that motion, that was for the amended agenda, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. So, June 1st is the official start of hurricane season. We want to make sure everybody starts to make preparations because especially in our low-lying areas where we have flooding conditions, when we have storms, want to make sure that you're ready. You can sign up for community alerts through Calvert Alert and download the Calvert Prepare app, and you'll get notifications of when those events may be occurring. Next, most of you were, have heard that we're going to set up a work group to look at school safety in our schools. And I just want to announce that we are ready to take applications. We've had a lot of emails of people interested in participating. So, we are now ready to take applications for anybody that wants to participate in the Student Safety and Well-Being Advisory Committee. You can, to apply, you go to calvercountymaryland.gov memberapplication, and you'll see that on there. It's the SSWAC Committee. So, you can submit those applications. And, excuse me, we're going to use the same process we used for the Police Accountability Board. That process seemed to work very well. So, you'll submit your applications. We'll have a review committee set up. They'll make recommendations to the board, and then the board will select those members. So, and that will be open for... Till the 31st. So, you have to get engaged and get your application in, please. And last but not least, Memorial Day is coming up next week, and want everybody to take time, a moment, to remember those, that sacrifice for all of us to make so that we can live in the free country that we live in. And there are some scheduled events going on. I don't know where you can go to see them, but there's usually one here at the courthouse on Monday at 10 o'clock. 1:00.
Is it at 1?
Uh-oh.
Let me look. Let me look.
Okay.
And there's also one at the beach on Saturday at 10:00. And I hear Governor Hogan's coming to speak that day. And the one here Monday is sometime around at 1:00 here in the courtyard. And if it's raining, we'll move inside. So, please, take a moment. I know that it's a festive weekend, but please take a moment to remember those, that sacrifice for all of us. That completes my public service announcements for this morning. First item on the agenda is old business, Department of Finance and Budget Fiscal Year 2025 Budget. Morning, ladies.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Dawn Wood. I am the Acting Budget Deputy Director for Finance and Budget. I will read the memo. Background. Listed within this memorandum are four items for discussion to assist in balancing the fiscal year FY 2025 projected revenue deficit. The first is real estate tax rate. Second is the income tax rate. Third is the water and sewer outstanding loan. And the final item is the cost of living adjustment, or COLA, and a merit step for eligible Calvert County government employees. Discussion. The first item for consideration is Calvert County's real property tax rate. For every one cent increase, the real estate tax levy will increase by approximately $1.4 million. Therefore, increasing the rate by 4 cents per 100 of assessed value is projected to yield an estimated increase of $5.8 million. This adjustment will raise the real estate tax rate from 0.927 per 100 of assessed value to 0.967. Based on ESTAT assessed values, if the tax rate is increased by 4 cents, the average impact on taxpayers will be $152. The second item for consideration is increasing Calvert County's income tax rate from 3% to 3.2%. This increase will yield $3.6 million in additional revenues. The third item for consideration is the authorization of payment of the outstanding loan from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund to the General Fund. The fourth item for consideration is direction to the Department of Finance and Budget of possible COLA and a merit step for eligible county employees. Fiscal impact? The fiscal dollar amount impact will be determined upon action taken by the Board of County Commissioners. Conclusion and recommendation, the Department of Finance and Budget requests that the B.O.C.C. take action on each of the above action items.
Thank you. So, hopefully, you all tuned in. Last Thursday night, we had a public hearing for the Commissioners' proposed budget. And Tuesday, a week ago, we had an extensive discussion here about our budget. Everybody should by now understand the situation that we're in, and that we tried to lay out Thursday night as best we could why we're in the situation that we're in and the pathway that we're trying to take to correct the budget. It's not going to be a short, easy fix, but there are steps that we believe we have to take now to get us on the right path. So, these are the four items that were mentioned in the draft proposed budget Thursday night that need action, and so that we can get them advertised out so people have time to make comments before we adopt the budget. That's why we've done this first thing this morning, to get that advertising out. We certainly don't take these, these issues lightly. And, well, there'll be some discussion here as we go along. So, with that, we also, I do want to take a moment to address at the public hearing, we did have some public comment that night about some perceived issues in the, in the budget. You want me to do that, or you want to do that?
I can read, I can read them off if you'd like, or however way you'd like. Okay. The first question pertains to the 13.676057 transfer to General Funds from General Funds referenced on page 48 of the FY 2025 Commissioners' Budget Book. The purpose of the appropriation is to reflect the necessary pay-go funding that was committed during prior year CIP budgets, and reflect projected funding requirements associated with these projects. These projects have already begun and may also have grant reimbursements which would have negative state funding consequences. Want me to continue on?
Sure.
Okay. The sole purpose of the $11.5 million under use of prior year fund balance, as reflected on page 50 of the FY 2025 Commissioners' Budget, is to balance sources of funds to uses of funds. Furthermore, there is no correlation between the revenue source and the $13.6 million transfers to General Fund as reflected on page 48 of the FY 2025 Commissioners' Budget. The purpose of the $13.6 million provides funding as discussed above. The second question pertains to the CIP summary on pages 238 through 239, where the expenditures do not match the revenues. Since the publication of the staff recommended budget book, there has been a process change. An incorrect file was uploaded into InDesign, the software that we use to generate the budget book. The chapter labeled Capital Budgets, Overview, and Six-Year Summary will be reformatted and updated in the budget book. We apologize for any inconvenience that may have caused. The third question pertains to the makeup of the $3.1 million in indirect charges for services as reflected on page 41 of the FY 2025 Commissioners' Budget. Attached is a breakdown of transfers to the General Fund listed by department. And I've, we've provided you a list of these items. The General Fund provides services to other county funds. Examples include finance and budget, human resources, and technology services. The allocation of these costs recoup General Fund expenditures incurred on behalf of these external funds. The fourth question pertains to the change in fund balance of approximately $30 million from FY '22 to FY 2025. The change in fund balance resulted from the use of $18.6 million for the FY 2024 CIP pay-go and the projected FY 2025 $11.5 million deficit. The final item that I have listed here is the question pertains to the Land Preservation Fund transfer of $2.9 million as reflected on page 48 of the FY 2025 Commissioners' Budget. This is an increase of $1.9 million over the prior year and reflects compliance with Resolution 32-21 that was adopted in 2021.
So, we just wanted to take a moment because, like I said, at the public hearing, some individuals pointed out some, what they saw as discrepancies. We wanted to publicly respond to those, and we will reach out to those individuals and explain the responses to the issues that they raised. So, just wanted to make sure everybody saw that we did that in public, and we will do that in private. So, I think that, at this point, we're ready to address those four items that were proposed.
Okay. I move that we direct staff to advertise a public hearing to receive comments on an increase of the county real property tax rate.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, that we advertise for a public hearing to receive comments on an increase in the county real property tax rate. Any discussion on that motion?
Did you want me to hold mine till I...
Whenever you feel it's appropriate, Commissioner.
So, because I know you're in the middle of a motion.
Yes.
So, I can hold my, hold my comments. Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one in opposition.
We want them all first?
Yes.
I move that we direct staff to advertise a public hearing to receive comments on an increase of the county income tax rate.
I second that.
I have a motion, a second, that we advertise a public hearing to receive comments on an increase in the county income tax rate. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
I move that we direct staff to reflect payment of the outstanding loan from the General Fund to Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in the budget prepared for adoption on June 4th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so, ready for me? So, so, before I read my motion, you know, there's a couple things they say don't do in politics. Don't say anything that can't be on the front pages of paper, right? And don't say you'll never do anything, or not do anything, because conditions change and things change. For 10 years, I've told you, I am against raising taxes. My stance has not changed. I do understand, though, that, you know, things are completely different today after COVID. I saw some guy just put a thing on Facebook or something. I think a Big Mac cost you like 50% more, 60% more than what it did pre-COVID. I mean, it's pretty crazy out here what things cost. And why I want to talk to you before I read this motion, I want to kind of give you my mindset a little bit. We've had more moving parts than ever in 10 years. We've had both our energy facilities that we're in negotiations with. Blueprint is the largest unfunded mandate, hear me, that I've ever been accustomed to. It is the law. It must be funded, but obviously not from the state. In fact, we lost $22 million this year. We knew January. So, there's a whole lot that has come down. And so, to me, you stop, you take a breath, you hit the reset button. I think we've identified what's coming next. And to me, I want some time to address these one by one. We have the best volunteers, fire EMS, public safety people, law enforcement in the business. We used to be all volunteer. It's an incredible thing to ask, to have 100% volunteer. It's an impossible thing. And we were the last county, I believe, in the state of Maryland to be that. Now, we have paid DMTs. And you have to. When 911 goes out, there is no excuse. That call has to be answered. Well, that's something that we never accounted for. We knew it was coming, but we just didn't know when. So, things will have to change going forward. For me personally, I need a minute. I know we've been talking about this for a few months, but I need a minute. I would need to see what the outcome's going to be on these energy facilities. I need to know what the true, the true target number's going to be for schools. Getting the, the, the update Thursday at 5:40 is not enough for me. Raising your taxes is a very big thing. And I will tell you again, if people don't remember, I've said it for years. When I first got here, we were bleeding $8 million a year. There was three votes to raise taxes. I didn't have the guts to raise your taxes. I did not know the budget on that level to reach in your pocket and do that. The members that were here before me, they had seen this. They knew they did not have a solution. I did not have a solution, but I wasn't prepared to do that. And I've openly admitted that to you several times. My, my stance, once again, on this is something has to change. The way we are doing business now, we cannot pay the bills. So, I don't condemn anybody for their approach on this. Me personally, I need a minute. And I think we have identified, for the most part, what we're going to face this time next June, barring some other thing. I mean, I don't think anybody saw the governor doing what he did. I've never seen that. I was here when they were building Dominion, and every single official, everybody under the woodwork talked about how beneficial this was, not just for Calvert County, but for Southern Maryland, the jobs, the revenue. Nobody turned around and said, hey, you do know, six years from now, because we had a piece of paper that said to the penny what we're going to get, that you're going to have money taken from your school budget. I, every, you've never seen a politician say they didn't want to fund schools, right? What's the biggest vote getter in the world? Hey, I fund schools. I take care of schools. And to take $22 million from one of the smallest jurisdictions, I didn't think I would ever see something like that. My, my, my fault. I guess I should have seen something like that coming, but I did not. So, I'm going to make this motion, and I just want to give you a little bit of what I'm thinking, because there's people going to say, hey, Mike, why didn't you raise taxes? Hey, Mike, how come, how come you did raise taxes? There's no right answer. So, this is just my, my motion. And that is, I move that the budget prepared for adoption on June 4th include funding the Board of Education at MOE, which is $152,250,152, with the state $22.6 million cut to education being funded by the Board of Education's fund balance. And then a single step and a 1% COLA for county employees. Start, start now, or, excuse me, when July 1 comes, immediate, you know, thing, and all paid by the savings and pay-go and the use of fund balance.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, I think you have direction now?
Yes. And we've already notified our office. So, the ad will be out shortly.
It will be advertised for a public hearing. And just to reiterate, you know, this budget isn't final. We won't make a final vote on the budget until June 4th. So, you still have an opportunity to comment. I don't want to keep belaboring it, but this is not easy for any of us to do these actions. But right now, we just don't see any other option to move forward. So, please make your comments, and we will take those under advisement.
So...
With the MOE.
With the MOE, and, and I guess expounding further upon the motion that Commissioner Hart said concerning the Board of Education. There's another directive, and in a way, we're going to address this. I want Director Bruce Miller to follow up with the Board of Education Superintendent regarding specific items issued during the fiscal year 2025. Commissioners operating capital budget public hearing held on 5/16. The ESSER funding breakdown was brought up as far as a $10 million ask, and we want to obtain a breakdown of how Calvert County BOE has utilized ESSER funding in the past. The remaining fund balance, determine the remaining balance after deducting the allocated $20 million. Line item budget from the BOE requests line item budgets for both '24 and '25. Documentation request, obtain backup documentation from the BOE demonstrating the submission of the actual approved budget to the Commissioners before the March 15th deadline. The Commissioners are the requesters on this ticket. Once you have obtained the information above, please reply publicly to the Commissioners to see the response.
So, to expand on that there, like Commissioner Hart said, we didn't get the presentation until Thursday at 5:45. Eight-page presentation, you know, not like last year, a budget due by March. And once I got home and started looking at this, you know, just, just looking at all the salaries, you know, they have all the salaries listed at $87,000 each, you know, lot, lot of questions on this, you know, did it include benefits package? So, it's just a lot of questions that we have for the superintendent. And I would like to make a request after the first quarter, that we see where they are and in conclusion with his line item budget. You know, we need to revisit this. We need to reevaluate this and see the funding and the line item budget.
I have a comment. We have asked for a line item budget for months. No response. I think as our constituents with your tax money, it's incumbent upon us to have a line item budget so we can see the, the breakdown where your money is going. Is it servicing the children effectively? Who's getting this money? We, you just can't come in here and say, I want $16 million. Well, you can, but I want $16 million, and I'm not going to tell you where it's going. But I'm going to tell you, if you don't give it to me, you're screwing the system. So, all we ask is line item budgeting. We want to be transparent. We want the needs of all students met. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment, Mr. President?
Certainly.
So, going back to the taxes, this has been a challenging budget. But with our current budget, we have tightened our belts. We have looked at spending. We have looked at CIP. We pushed CIP out. We're looking out for our employees. The cost of goods and services has risen, and the need for services has grown. So, that's why we need to look at every facet of this budget.
So, a plan has been implemented. We cut expenses. Fortunately, we had to raise taxes. All of us pay taxes. Nobody wants to raise taxes. But in a crisis like this, there's not a whole lot of options on what we can do. It's probably going to take us two years to build our bridge to get out of the situation we're currently in. We've all struggled with where to cut and where to mend. It's been a challenge, without a doubt, as Commissioner Cox and a few others have already said. We spent countless hours going through the budget to ensure we're using taxpayer money wisely, diligently, and conservatively. These are undoubtedly challenging times. We appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation during this budget cycle. Our employers, excuse me, our employees are our backbone. I have personally received numerous phone calls, text messages, emails from our employees. And we've researched what surrounding jurisdictions have proposed. We all know it's imperative to do our due diligence to afford our employees the opportunity that others have. Recruitment and retention issues are prevalent throughout the country, as are hiring processes. It's a challenge. I mean, it, it is a challenge to go out here and hire new employees. So, we're doing everything we can to ensure that our employees are taken care of, and we appreciate everything they do to take care of the day-to-day operations for Calvert County citizens. Thank you.
So, I think that you've heard that if the system will respond to our questions and provide the information that we asked for, that we're confident in that we can amend the budget at any time and meet those challenges. But I think that today, we're all just looking for information to make a good decision. So, I think enough's been said. And so, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is proclamation. The first one is for National Travel and Tourism Week. Ms. Daly, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Hillary Daly. I'm the Tourism Program Specialist. This week is National Travel and Tourism Week. When we, people who live and work in Calvert County, spend our money in Calvert County at local businesses, our money gets recycled back into our local economy, which is fantastic. Shop small, shop local. It's awesome. On top of that, when visitors, even your Aunt Bee, who lives in St. Mary's County, comes over, she's a visitor, when they come and spend their money in Calvert County, they are bringing... County, they are bringing and then leaving fresh, new money into our economy, Calvert County's economy. On average, in the past five years, minus twenty-twenty at the height of the pandemic, visitors to Calvert County have come and gone and left, on average, one hundred and forty-five million dollars in Calvert County, here for us. These new dollars go directly to Calvert County's small local businesses, restaurants, charter fishing companies, breweries, wineries, attractions, hotels, bed and breakfasts, marinas, art galleries, shops, pools, rental companies, golf courses, and our tax base. Also, each year, thanks to visitors to Calvert County and the rest of Maryland, our household taxes, yours and mine, are one thousand dollars less because, uh, annually, because of the money that comes from people visiting Calvert County, leaving their money here, then going home. At this time, I'd like to have all of the organizations and business representatives who are here to support this proclamation come to the front, because they all rely on visitors, for some, if not the majority of their revenue. I would especially like to recognize the representatives that are here today of small locally-owned businesses that depend on visitor dollars to continue to stay in business and thrive here in Calvert County. I also would like to, um, have Joyce Baki come up. She's here for a different, uh, proclamation, but she was Tourism Program Specialist for years before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Adrian Hope Sales, and I'm President of Chesapeake Wind Sail Cruises.
Good morning. My name is Nate Pope, and I'm CEO, Chesapeake Wind Sail Cruises. We offer daily sailing cruises out of Chesapeake Beach, four times a day, six days a week. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce Stenit Baki, and I'm the former Tourism Specialist of Calvert County. And I also want to recognize Katie Britton, who was my assistant back then. So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Corjo Tzolo, and I'm representing Roddenberry Resort.
Good morning. My name is Tiana Forbes. I'm Director of Sales at the Hilton Garden in Solomon's.
Good morning. I'm Kiar Fratley, the Marketing and Communications Coordinator at Anne-Marie Sculpture Garden and Art Center.
Good morning. My name is Rod Cofield. I'm the Executive Director of Jefferson Patterson Parking Museum.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Corinne Warren with the Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum.
Good morning. Dawn Matritson, the Town of North Beach, uh, Marketing Relations and Industry.
Hello, everyone. Larry Jaworski, Town Council, Town of Chesapeake Beach, and Chair of the County Economic Development Advisory Commission. Tourism is a key part of the continued economic development in our county, so let's continue to support it. Thank you.
Good morning. Martha Kennedy. I'm the Park Manager for the Town of Chesapeake Beach.
Good morning. I'm Michael Sweeney, President of the Friends of the Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum. We support the museum with money, material, and volunteers. And we keep history alive in Calvert County and in the Twin Beaches.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Murray, the Director at the Calvert-Bri Museum in Solomon's.
Good morning. My name is Mina Kim, General Manager at the Spring Hill Suites by Marriott Prince Frederick.
Good morning. I'm Glenn Novak. I'm the Chef and Owner of No Time to Cook in Solomon's.
Good morning. My name is Dan Hamilton. I'm the owner of a small business called Megalodon Adventures. We offer, uh, charter tours on the Chesapeake. Our specialty is hunting for fossils, and we love doing it. My business partner is Teresa Smith. Teresa Smith, and her daughter's.
Good morning, Sarah Frey, Economic Development.
Good morning. Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. And I just wanted to thank all these businesses for choosing Calvert to be home for their business. Thank you.
Absolutely, Julie. It's great to see so many businesses come out today for National Travel and Tourism Week. We appreciate everyone taking the time to be here, to be recognized. I have a proclamation that reads, whereas the week of May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, has been designated as National Travel and Tourism Week, and whereas the travel industry supports millions of American jobs as one of the largest private sector employers in the United States, and provides travelers and countless benefits by helping families create memories, connecting communities, and enriching people's lives. And whereas, travel to and within Maryland has historically provided significant economic benefits for the state, generating thirty-point-three billion dollars in both indirect and induced economic impacts, and two-point-three billion dollars in state and local tax revenues in the state of Maryland. Whereas, travel positively affects Calvert County, Calvert County's economic prosperity and image. Tourism improved the local economy by providing seventy-six-point-four million dollars in labor income, one thousand six hundred and ten jobs in Calvert County, and a hundred and forty-eight million dollars in visitor spending. And whereas, welcoming visitors from near and far to enjoy Calvert County and spend their money in local businesses to support our tax base has always been and always will be the enduring character of the travel industry in Calvert County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four be known as National Travel and Tourism Week in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we urge all citizens to recognize, join in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in our community, given under our hands and seal this twenty-first day of May, twenty twenty-four, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Joyce, you want to come on forward? So our next proclamation is for National Poppy Day.
Hi, I'm Joyce Stenit Baki. I am the President of Eric L. Lor, Aug, uh, American Legion Auxiliary, uh, Unit Two Seven Four. This Monday will mark our unofficial start to summer. But another thing that it marks is Memorial Day, which is the true meaning of the weekend. And on Memorial Day, we support and we celebrate all of those veterans that have been a big part of our lives, that they did, as my grandson has often told me, it's because of them that we are free. So our goal is, is to get out the word, because if you go anyplace, you're gonna see poppies. And these little poppies are all over graves that are in Europe. So this has become our national way of saying thank you to these veterans that we have lost. I also have a special poppy for each of the Commissioners. Now, these, these were made, thank you, Katie. These were made by one of our auxiliary members, and Penny made them especially for you, but I also have more poppies. I don't know if I have for the entire group. And I want to show off, I have poppy posters that, thank you, Rodney. Uh, Rodney Jones is gonna be taking them back to Charlotte Hall. We had a poppy poster contest, and our winners, um, Emery Hughes, and Monroe Bailey, their fourth and fifth grade, and Madeline McLaughlin, all students at Our Lady's Star of the Sea. They will be getting, um, they will be getting prizes, but these posters and the whole pile that I gave Rodney earlier will go over to Charlotte, uh, Charlotte Hall for our veterans over at Charlotte Hall. Now, it's interesting, too, because we have so many veterans, and it's very, very important that we keep them at the top of our mind. So I'd like to, if you don't mind, call up a couple of my cohorts in crime.
Absolutely.
Our members of Quilts of Valor, if you all could come up. Rodney, if you can come up. Ricky, you're already here. Um, but we would like to present two Quilts of Valor today. One, Mark Willis. If you would please come up to the front, Mark. In fact, both of our recipients are Marines. Our second, I missed your birthday, Dave, but would you come up too, please? I know we talked about August, but these two gentlemen, both Marines, have been, served their country proudly. And I will let, where's Dee? Dee is going to, I, actually, we're gonna have to put you someplace. Yeah. Rodney, I'll get you up front. I'll get, and then the two ladies. All right. I'm turning this over to Dee Wander. Dee is with Quilts of Valor, Faith and Freedom. Um, I'm also a member of that. We also have members here. So hold on just a second.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to present these two quilts to our wonderful veterans. Good morning. On behalf of Quilts of Valor, Faith and Freedom of Calvert County, Maryland, today we are here to honor you, David and Mark. Quilts of Valor Foundation was started in two thousand and three and has presented over three hundred and eighty-five thousand quilts. Quilts of Valor quilts are dedicated to comfort all veterans and service members from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Latin America, Desert Storm, Iraq, and Afghanistan. Upon returning, many veterans were not welcomed, and as they are being praised for their valor, they were met with criticism. We do not know where you served or what you did or what you were told to do, but today we say thank you for serving our great country and welcome home. These quilts serve as tangible reminders of the appreciation and the gratitude to all service members. A quilt of valor is not an ordinary blanket. It is a quilt consisting of three layers secured together by many stitches, representing the communities.
Uh-oh.
And the many individuals that we are.
We couldn't pay the electric bill.
You said the budget was bad. Cause savings measures.
The top is, the top is made of many colors, shapes, and fabrics, representing the communities and the many individuals that we are. The batting, which is the filler, is the center of the quilt, provides warmth. It represents our hope that this quilt will bring warmth and comfort, peace and healing to you, Mark and David. The backing is the strength of the recipient, the support of their family and friends, and a gratitude of a nation that lives free. Finally, the binding finishes off the quilt, surrounding it on all four sides, representing our sincere hope that the recipient will feel surrounded by love and honor. Today, it gives Joyce, Bonnie, Arlene, June, and myself, and the rest of Faith and Freedom, great pleasure to award these Quilts of Valor and say thank you for your service. Now, I do have, um, everyone, your quilts will have a, it's got a label on it to tell you who made it, and your quilts this morning were made by Arlene, who's standing there. And you will get a certificate. It tells you who bound it, who pieced it, who quilted it. Do I have your permission, David and Mark, to take your picture and post it on the Faith of Freedom website and found, as a Quilts of Valor Foundation? And that's how they keep track of how many quilts have been presented? David?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, June, I'm gonna, June's gonna, you gonna read it? Can you read it or you want me?
I can see it. Okay. The embroidered white stars in this quilt for presentation case were made in the United States of America during the. During the automated manufacturing process, some of the stars ended up slightly imperfect. You might find the imperfect star. These stars have never been sewn into a United States flag, but are now being honored nonetheless.
Calvert County is the only one that, we carry our quilts in these flag bags. Uh, other groups do not do that. So I'm gonna sneak away and take pictures if you don't mind.
And what I ask of all of you, and anyone that gets to hear this, um, is that you remember our fallen, but also remember those who live on and carry on the duties, because they're in your everyday life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. We re, we would really appreciate if you used your quilts. You can take it home in your flag bag, but then take it out. You can use your flag bag as a pillowcase, but please use your quilts.
I use mine. Thank you.
Good job.
So as we go on through Memorial Day, let's wear our poppies proud, and let's remember those who fought for our freedom. So I have, I do have a proclamation, and it reads as, whereas a poppy flower symbolizes the sacrifices made by military personnel in conflicts throughout history, and whereas National Poppy Day is celebrated throughout the world, and whereas the American Legion family brought National Poppy Day to the United States by asking Congress to designate the Friday before Memorial Day as National Poppy Day, and whereas on that day, we ask all to wear the red poppy to honor the fallen and support the living who have worn our nation's uniform, and whereas the red poppy is a national-recognized symbol to, of sacrifice worn by Americans since World War One to honor those who served and died for our country in all wars, and whereas it reminds Americans of the sacrifices made by our veterans while protecting our freedom. Now therefore, be proclaimed that Calvert County Board of County Commissioners recognize National Poppy Day as a day of reflection, gratitude, and remembrance. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners express gratitude for the sacrifices made by military personnel, the efforts of American Legion family in bringing National Poppy Day to the United States, and similar the red poppy as a reminder of the sacrifices made by veterans to protect our freedoms, given under this hands and seal this twenty-first day, May twenty twenty-four, signed by all five Commissioners. Thank you.
We ready?
Almost. So we're good? Trying teamwork here. She has flash, I do not. So, sorry to advance the game blinded. sorry, it may be too dark and blinded. Hopefully one of those will, thank you for your service, guys. Congratulations.
So ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, since the power is out, we have to recess until we get the power back on because our meetings have to be recorded. So I need a motion to recess.
Make a motion to recess?
A motion to second to recess until the power comes back on. Any discussion on the motion here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.